Okay, um, let's get started. Good evening and welcome to our virtual public school board meeting. Please be aware that the Happer Horsham School District Board of School Directors are recording this meeting and the opinions expressed by any member of the public do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Happer Horsham School District Board of School Directors and are solely those of the presenter. The Happer Horsham District Board hereby expressly disclaims any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public. If we could please stand for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States of America and to the Republic
which it stands
one nation under indivisible with liberty
liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Riker, could we please have roll call?
Yes, Madam President. Okay, Jennifer Wilson.
Here.
Dave Brown.
Here.
Eric Coons.
Here.
Teresa Brown.
Here.
Mary McCouch.
Here.
Susan Hansigerhoff.
Here.
Tara Connor-Halston.
Here.
DJ Schultz.
I am present.
And Jim Greenall.
Here.
Thank you.
Dr. Everslag, are there any announcements?
No, Madam President.
Okay, so the notice of the meeting, tonight we are holding a special action meeting for the purpose of voting on a proposed timeline for returning students to in-person instruction. This recommended action is a follow-up on the information that was shared publicly at the 10:520 work session. 24-hour notice of tonight's meeting was given to the public. We will now have public comment as governed by Board Policy 006. Please note, as this is a special meeting, the public comment is only for the agenda items. If you would like to speak today, you can raise your hand in Zoom by hovering your mouse over the Zoom toolbar and clicking the raise hand button, or you can hit star nine on your phone. That will alert the meeting host that you wish to speak, and when it is your turn, you will be changed to a speaking role and prompted on the call that is your turn to speak. Speaking is limited to three minutes, and when your time has expired, you will return to normal meeting participant. Please also state your name, address, and municipality of residence prior to your comment.
Okay, thank you. Yep, first we have Justin Gindhart. You can go ahead and unmute yourself and speak.
All right, can you hear me?
I can.
All right, Justin Gindhart from 29 Barrel Staves Circle in Horsham. Thank you for allowing us to come to this board meeting. I, one, would like to know if we have an updated result on the survey, if we could have that before the board meeting, that would be great, just so we can see where we're at. Also, again, like I said on my last comment, for President Wilson, VP, Dave Brown, DZ Schultz, Susan Hansingerhoff, and Teresa Brown, I implore you all to vote yes. I know you guys voted no last time. I implore you all to vote yes this time to get our kids back in school for the interest of them. So, thank you for considering my plea to get our kids back in. So far, it's been 80% that want our kids back in, and I just, I hope you listen to the public. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Bill Maffa. Go ahead and you can unmute and speak.
Good evening, my name is Bill Maffa, I'm a resident on Brumar Drive in Horsham. I have four quick questions. If a student chooses 100% virtual now and the school moves to full-time instruction that you're working towards, is that person able to move to full-time instruction from virtual in the future? How are unanswered surveys being handled? Are they forced into virtual, or are they being forced in the hybrid? I would think you would need to force one to properly plan for how you're going to handle the situation. Under the current guidelines, is it ever going to be feasible for full-in-school instruction? And I suggest a follow-up survey in a couple weeks, asking how people feel about having a five-full-day instruction, or would they like to stay virtual for the entire year? And see if we can, this is feasible to go five-day full instruction based on those that choose to go virtual now. I'd like to have my kids instructed five days a week, and I'll take the hybrid for now, but I'd like to be my kids instructed five days a week by a teacher. Thank you for your time and all the effort you guys put in to set this up for my kids. Thank you.
So, just a reminder, we are voting on the dates for the return to in-person learning, and that is the only agenda item that we are voting on tonight. So I ask that you keep your comments to that agenda item.
Okay, next we have Eric Rice. Eric, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yeah, hi. I'm hopeful my question is on topic. I have one question, and I'd love a response from each board member, and a yes or no answer. Using the hybrid vote that we're going through tonight for context, to remove any logistical challenges, do each of you agree or disagree that your vote should reflect the community or majority voices, not your personal opinion? And I didn't say I'm 7 Pin Oak Lane, Horsham, Pennsylvania.
Thank you. This is not a question-and-answer session. This is a public comment session, just so that everyone in the public is aware. This is the time for you to make a comment, but it's not necessarily a back-and-forth question-and-answer session.
Okay.
And in regards to that, though, tonight, we will each be voting, right, and we'll be each, that'll be record of how we're voting, right, just in response to the last.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Okay, next we have Diane Walts. You can go ahead and unmute.
My name is Diane Walts. I live at 21 Latch String Lane. It's Hepro Post Office at Horsham Township. My only comment, and because I know you're voting on one thing tonight, is that I just would like to see for our kids some sort of normalcy. I know this has been a challenging year for everyone. I live it and breathe it every day in my work. However, what I see in my own home for my child is really what I need to focus on, as I think most of us do, and the politics around all of this have been challenging. And I think as a school district, you have the power to do the right thing for our students. I know this is a strange and fearful time for many, however, we as a community have thrived and pulled together, and I think our kids deserve that sense of community. I believe our teachers also want that sense of community, what that looks like. I know is a challenge. However, having had to ebb and flow my own work life the last nine months, what we decide today is not necessarily what next week will look like, and I think we all need to recognize that. So, thank you for your time. I have faith that you will make the right decision, and we will all get on with our lives. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Christopher S T A S U K is how the, it appears in Zoom. You can go ahead, give me a second. Okay, you can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Hey there, thanks for the timer, by the way. Appreciate that. Just a couple things. Going forward, we, the public is hoping, again, we want to hear that our voice is heard. We want choice. We understand everybody's got an independent decision that reflects their own family situation, so that's why we want a choice. Going forward, we would hope that you guys put together a pandemic response team that hopefully includes a pediatrician and a psychiatrist for their opinion. Keep improving things as we go along. There's always room for improvement, and hopefully, we will be able to see the results of the survey published. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Rachel Welch. You, in one second, there you go, can unmute and make your comment? Rachel, I still see you as muted. I can S to unmute you, but you do need to unmute yourself when you're in Zoom or on your phone. Okay, I'm gonna leave that hand raised, but move on to the next. Next is Chris Koval, C O V A L. I apologize for mispronunciations. You can go ahead and unmute and make your comment.
Thank you. I'm Chris Koval, 587 Coach Road. I have two kids in the district. First, I'd like to make a comment that I think teachers are doing a heroic job. I know they're working extra hours late at night, and I think they're, that they're doing a wonderful job under very difficult circumstances that they did not ask for. What I would also like to say is that I think this school board has forgotten a very important principle, that these are public schools we're talking about. These schools belong not just to Democrats, they belong to Republicans, they belong to liberals, they belong to conservatives, they belong to every member of this community, wouldn't matter what your belief is. And the idea that we're going to keep these schools closed indefinitely for political reasons is absolutely wrong. If people feel they are too worried about the virus, that the virus is too risky to send their kids to school, they have the virtual option, and that's fine and appropriate. But people that feel that their kids benefit from in-person school should be able to have that right. So obviously, two days is better than nothing, and I'm sure the vote will pass. It makes perfect sense. But I would like to see this school board move to five days a week as soon as humanly possible, and I think that that time is now.
Sorry. Next, we have Victoria Vessi or Bazy. You can go ahead and unmute and make your comment.
Hi, I'm actually using my wife's account. This is Louis Tanzos of Byberry Road in Happerl. I would like to say that I've heard a lot of pro-open statements, and I would like to say that I would request that the board all vote to keep things all virtual. What we're hearing is people playing politics. We are hearing them say that you must open, it's bad for the kids, that hasn't been demonstrated. Kids are resilient, they'll bounce back. We need to keep the kids safe. We need to keep the rest of the community safe. If we send children back to in-person learning, they will get sick, they will get other people sick. We need to let science inform us, and science says, don't do it. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you. Next, we have Tiffany R I V E L. You can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tiffany Rebel. I live on Black Watch Court in Horsham. Tonight, I'm urging the board to please consider reopening the schools. Not only has the CDC recommended in-person instruction when safely to do so, however, the CDC has also expressed that extended school closures are harmful to our children's development of social and emotional skills. And for the sake of our children, please reopen the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kristy Perone. Apologize if I said the last name incorrectly. You can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Hi, Kristy Perone, 509 Catherine Way, Happerl. Everyone's saying, you know, we want our children to go back to normalcy. I want my children to go back to normalcy as well. I'm a teacher. I would love to be in school with my students. It's very difficult not to see them in person, but I'm not sure everyone understands what normalcy is. Is it just children walking into a building? That's not necessarily normalcy for them. Going to school two days a week is not necessarily normalcy. I'm not sure everyone understands what hybrid looks like. Going into school every other day and then coming home for three days is no way for a child to learn. It's not a routine. Students need a routine. Even coming from me as a teacher, you can see students need a routine. We need kids to be in a routine in order for them to learn. I'm actually asking the board to stay virtual right now, because kids need that constant routine. And also, our children may not be with their same teachers. So if they get a different teacher, we're back to square one again. We're back to get-to-know-you activities. They're going to lose at least two weeks of learning. If they go back in November, we're almost halfway through the year, and now they got to get to know teachers and students again. What kind of learning is that? What kind of normalcy is that?
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Leela R E Z G U I for the last name. You can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. Hello, I'm a ninth grader. I'm new to the high school, and I'm a freshman, and I live on Bark Hollow. And I've never, like, obviously, like, it's a new start, like, high school, and I think that if, like, we take, like, the right precautions, it would be, like, really safe, and I just want to be able to, like, experience my first year in high school, and I just, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Debbie. I believe it's Jasner, but it looks like it's spelled a little different, so I apologize if I got it wrong. But Debbie, you can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Hi, my name is Deborah Jasner. I'm at 71 Greenwood's Drive in Horsham. I just wanted to urge the board to consider doing, continue virtual. As it was given to the superintendent, there's still a need in the elementary schools for supported staff. My daughter, who was at Blair Mill, had a last-minute substitute come in during the beginning of COVID, and it was horrible. The teacher did the best that she could.
Are you still there?
I did not disconnect her. I see her reconnected, but, pause that. I'm gonna just, Debbie, I'm sorry, I didn't disconnect you. I don't know what happened, but I'm gonna go ahead and disable it, but leave your hand raised, and I'll come back to you. Um, next, we have Jen Matten. You can go ahead and unmute and speak. Jen, are you there? Okay, I'll come back to that one as well. Next up, we have Ryan M. Ryan, you can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Hi, thanks. Ryan McKinney from Fieldstone Lane in Horsham. I'd like to preface my comment by saying a big, big thank you to the teachers who are putting in the extra time, going the extra mile, really put in a situation that's difficult, extremely difficult, and, you know, obviously not typical. Having said that, I think everyone has been affected by this, you know? Everyone has had to adapt and change. Many, many, many parents are having to adapt their work schedules, how they deal with work, and, you know, we, I sympathize with the teachers, but, you know, they also need to kind of adapt, just like what the rest of us have. And I understand there's, there's, there's some parents, and they're concerned regarding keeping the schools closed, but we need to have choice. We need to have the option for, for those who want their kids in school. I know it might not be normalcy per se, but the social interaction between kids and the social aspect is too important to overlook. So I urge the board to vote in favor of the hybrid. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Rebecca Mattis, M A T T E S. Go ahead and speak.
Hi, this is Rebecca Mattis. Saw Mill Lane in Horsham. I have a daughter that's in Blair Mill, and just listening to the schooling that goes on during the course of the day is extremely frustrating. The teacher alone today had Microsoft Teams crash multiple times and had children log in and out. These kids are not getting anything out of the virtual, and while I agree that for some people that may be best, it's not for all, and we do need to have a choice. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Next, sorry, let me pull my timer back up. Next, we have Angela. Angela, go ahead and unmute, and you can speak. Can anyone hear me, Angela? Okay.
Here we go. I think I got it.
You did. You're good now.
All right, super. Thank you. This is Angela. I live on Lancaster Avenue in Happerl. I have two children in the district, a freshman and a fourth grader, and I just want to express my gratitude for having a choice in the hybrid and virtual models, because what will work for one won't work for both. And so, just grateful to have the choice to select an option that will work for each one of my children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Some of these may be repeats. We'll try again for some people that had some technical issues. Next, we have Justin Heath. You can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Good evening, everybody. I just first wanted to give a big thank you to all the teachers, like others have said tonight, that are putting in the extra hours, the time to make sure that our students are able to follow along in class, assessing their home situations, to make sure they have the proper connectivity with their laptops. I also want to give thank you to the board for coming tonight, and certain board members pushing to have this vote this evening. It's paramount. It's in the forefront of everybody's mind. As a parent of two in the district, I want the option of having the choice of being able to send our kids back to school, not just so that they can have the social interaction with their, with their classmates, but so that they can be in person with their teacher where they learn best. One thing that nobody has mentioned is the amount of screen time that these young kids are having to go through on a day-in-and-day-out basis, and how that is detrimental to their learning ability. Everyone learns best in the classroom. The teachers are amazing teachers inside and outside the classroom, but just like the other parents that are on this call, we are all, the majority of us, are all imploring you to make the vote non-political and bring our kids back to school where they belong.
Thank you. Next is Debbie Jasner. Debbie, let's go ahead and try that again.
Hi, this is Deborah Jasner. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, I just wanted to finish my comment. As much as people are saying to bring our children back to school, I asked the board to please wait another month until we can see the numbers. Let the superintendent get the staffing in place. Let the, let the regulations and the safety put in place before we take our, before we bring our children back. I feel like the virtual is doing amazing. I have a child at Blair Mill Elementary School. They have been doing an amazing job. My daughter at Keith Valley on the black team, shout out to the principals and the support staff there. I have had no problems. I voted to put my kids into virtual until the school can get everything in place. I give kudos to the superintendent for laying it out, but there's still a lot that needs to be put in place before we bring our, our children back to school. I just asked the board to consider another month and then come back and revisit this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Orley and Jason. Last name A R O N O V I T Z. You can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Hi, good evening. I'm Orley. I'm here with my husband, Jason Aronovitz. We're at Woodbrook Drive in Ambler, and our two children are students at Simmons Elementary. We would like to start by saying that although virtual learning is not ideal, we have been very, very impressed with the level of learning and engagement taking place. Our children are forming meaningful bonds with their teachers and their classmates, and they are both at the point where they absolutely adore their teachers. Like most other families, we long for a time when we can get back to normal with a full reopening of school. We have read and listened to your proposal of the hybrid model, and we have multiple concerns regarding sending our children to school in this format. First, we'd like to address the health issue. Other area schools that have reopened have been hit with COVID-19 cases and have been forced to shut down classes or even the entire school. Staff members have had to quarantine or have fallen ill. We're looking at reopening our schools right at the start of flu season, and with COVID-19 cases on the rise, it is not an if, but a when this virus will enter our schools. Reopening just as flu season begins adds an extra layer of concern for the safety of our kids, staff, families, and community. Secondly, we'd like to address the educational aspect. The hybrid model has children at home working three days a week with many more hours of asynchronous learning than they have now, and we know that the asynchronous model doesn't work for our young children, because they need more guidance and more direction. Our children will therefore have less time to connect with their teachers and also their classmates with this model. And also, having built a solid relationship with their teachers, we have no guarantee who's going to teach our children. Based on your numbers, it appears that about a whopping third of our children will have to switch teachers, and this is doing a huge disservice to our children. Haven't they already dealt with enough, enough loss during this pandemic? And we would like to suggest that you please consider keeping our virtual model going as it has, at least for now. This will give our children the continuity and routine that they need and thrive upon. It will give our community a chance to see how flu season pans out and how COVID-19 cases trend. This gives our school time to plan for a potential full reopening, which is the ideal scenario that we want. And while the current virtual learning model does pose its challenges, it is the far better choice than the two options presented. And this way, all of our children will be able to keep their teachers, and everyone can stay safe and healthy, which should be our number-one priority. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is, the last name is Kampf, K A M P F. You can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can.
Great, thank you. I, this is Melissa Frees Kampf on Meeting House Road in Horsham. I have two children in the school district, one in third grade and one is a junior in high school. I'd first like to say it's I'd first like to say it's pretty disappointing that we're not voting on the high school return tonight. That's at least my understanding, because I feel that they, it's also important to, to include them in these type of choices. And I feel like the high school is continually, you know, left out of the conversation. I also think it's important to remember that the school board's job is to be the voice for the community. And I understand, I am sympathetic to those that do not feel safe to send their kids back. I'm so happy to hear that there are some families that have a great experience with virtual and I would never want to take that away from them. But it's clear from the survey, from the comments on this call, that the community is saying we want a choice. So for the people that love virtual and want to stay, I would never want to take that away, like I said. But there are people that don't have that great experience. There are working parents that this is very hard on. And I feel like we, again, I implore the, the school board to give the parents that choice. Let us decide what is best for our family. And if you take a look at the survey, you are listening to. The combating sides on this call. It's clear that we need a choice. Thank you.
Greg.
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, I was muted. Next is Melissa Cosmo. Melissa, you can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Hi, thank you. My name is Melissa Cosmo. I live at 13 Heather Lane in Horsham. I was just calling in to ask the board to please vote against the hybrid model. I personally feel that unfortunately, as much as we want our children back in school. And it is the right thing eventually that we get there when it is safe to do so. That this method is just not going to work. It's going to cause an upheaval between teachers and students who have spent months. Getting to know one another and each other's styles. It's also going to cause, be problematic for high school students if they're watching Facebook Live. Are they truly going to be able to have the interaction to ask questions if they're having a problem? I just implore the board to keep things virtual for the next couple of months until we're sure that the metrics are stable to send everyone back. Until it's full and ready to go back. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Victoria Vazey. You can go ahead and unmute.
Hi folks, it is in fact Victoria Vazey this time, not my husband. I'm still on Byberry Road here in Hatborough. And I wanted to address the board regarding this proposal very briefly. I. As you might guess from my husband and I are in agreement that we request you vote against it. In my particular case, I think that. It is, there are people who really want choice and they really want to have their kids back in school. And so they're very interested in this hybrid or even a full opening. And I think they do not understand how disruptive that will be in practice. That while people send kids back, but as we've seen all over this country and even in this state. That there are cases and then the kids are being quarantined, the entire school sometimes have to close. That, and suddenly people who are hoping to have this reliable schedule, particularly kids and especially the younger kids. They thought they would have this reliable schedule and then suddenly they're thrown back into virtual full time again. Their parents, some of them may have gone back to work or made other arrangements and they're not prepared to handle that. And I think that's going to be really disruptive to families in general, but particularly to the children because. That as folks have said, routine is important for kids, especially the younger kids. And over time, that's going to be very, I think, going to be more disruptive than some parents anticipate. I will stop there. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Christina. And that is all that is listed for your name. You can go ahead and unmute. Please remember to follow the directions on the screen and you can speak.
Hey, this is Christina Juris. I'm on Holly Drive, Papera mailing address, Horsham municipality, I guess you could say. I have one statement and one question. My first question, I realize you may not answer this. But my first question is if we have answered the survey in one way and we would like to change. Our answer following this, this meeting, so to speak. Can we do so? And if, if we can without, you know, massive confusion, I would like to do so. The second thing is I want to commend everybody that is continually showing up for these school board meetings and providing their commentary. I too believe that the school board represents the community and should represent what they, the community is, is in favor of. However, I also recognize that I voted for these school board members because I know that they. Are doing what's in the best interest for my child, not necessarily for me, but for my child. And I also know that as part of the school board, you may have access to information, instructions, metrics, things that the. Standard parent would not have. And I, I trust that those things are shaping your decision. And I'm, I'm sad to see that all of this has turned into a, a finger pointing game that this is Democrat or Republican. No, this is about the safety of our kids. So I think everybody just needs to put down the pitchforks. And realize that this is about what's west, but what's best for our kids, not for you, not for your political party, but what's best for our kids. So that is my comments. Thank you very much.
Okay, next we have Shelby Pagano. You can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can.
Awesome. My name is Shelby Pagano. I live on Noble Page Lane in Horsham. I have been listening to every school board meeting. This is the first time I've decided to talk. I feel like the squeaky wheels are the loudest. And it's time for everybody to go ahead and make sure you know where everyone's at. I have one at Keith Valley, two at the high school. First of all, I think considering what we're going through, the school district has done a fantastic job. Our educators are doing a good job. I believe our new superintendent is doing everything he can as well as our school board. What I would ask the school board to do is to listen to the guidance of the superintendent. I don't run a school. All these parents on the phone calling in, none of them run a school. Listen to our principals, our teachers and our superintendent. If hybrid is a viable option for us right now and they feel it's educationally sound and safe, then I'm, I'm all for it. However, the way our superintendent talked the other night. I didn't feel that he was completely 100% confident that our kids would be getting. The same level of education in a hybrid model. I just want to make sure that's where we're at, that we're not sacrificing education for socialization. I'm good either way. I, I trust the school board to follow the superintendent's recommendation. Everybody's talking a lot about choice. I agree about choice, but first we have to make sure the school district can do it. And I don't think any of us know that. I think the superintendent, the principals and the educators do. So I would implore the board to listen to them with a nice big old ear, just like the rest of us talking to you. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Hold on one second. Clicking the wrong buttons. Here we go. Next is a call in person. It's 1215-3704-113. You can go ahead and unmute and speak. Again, that number, did I unmute? Yeah, I'm unmuted. That number is 215-3704-113. I can pop up and ask you to unmute. That might make it easier.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can now. There you go.
Okay, hi, my name's Erin. I live on Wombine Court in Horsham. I'm a senior at the high school. I'd just like to thank all the teachers for like trying to cooperate with everything with online and stuff. It's just that I feel like I'm learning the bare minimum, honestly. In school would be very much more helpful. Like, I'm trying to go off to college and be successful and it's very hard to do that at home, sitting in front of a laptop that crashes every second. I, I respect like what they're doing and everything. It's just like, I also play soccer for the school and that's going on too. And we're taking the right precautions and everything and. Everything, everything seems to be working out fine with that. So with the right precautions at the school, it would be fine to go back hybrid and like. Just go back, honestly. And yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Next we have John, J O H N. John, you can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Hi, this is actually his wife, Elizabeth Parker. I live in Tallamore and I, I do just want to first and foremost commend the administration. As well as the teachers. I know that this is unprecedented times and we're all adjusting and working more, parents, teachers, administration and so forth. We do have a daughter in the district and virtual has been less than ideal. And I guess what I'm most concerned about is, is to follow suit, the lack of choice. We don't have a choice. You haven't given us a choice. And we've had a daughter in pre-K for the last five months with no issues. I have a sister-in-law who's a teacher in the district. She's back in the classroom. There's no issues. I have nieces and nephews in private parochial school and neighboring public schools. There's no issues. And if there is, they have a plan in place to quarantine, to pivot, to adapt, to be agile as we all have learned to be. And I feel like every week we wait, every 48 hours we wait to vote is lost time for these poor children mentally, physically, educationally, most importantly. So I do just ask that you give us a choice. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Amy McKinney. You can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Hi, my name's Ava McKinney. I live on Fieldstone Lane. I'm speaking as a senior in high school. Last year I already missed out on many events as a junior and just thinking about it now, it's like way more. We have absolutely nothing and I think that if a senior in high school understands that it should be your own choice whether you want to go back or not, then everyone should be able to. Some of these parents want, want what's best for them and not for everyone else in the community. I urge you guys to vote for hybrid and hopefully five days as soon as possible. So we can enjoy the next about six months that are supposed to be the best years of your life. And I know that most of my class and teachers agree with me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Erin Walsh. You can go ahead and unmute and speak. Nope, Erin disappeared. All right, next we have Clarice. You can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Hi, this is Alexis. I live on Bayberry Circle. I'm an eighth grader at Keith Valley. I love my teachers and my school. They really are the best. I know me and my friends are responsible enough to follow all the guidelines and directions that our teachers tell us. I am asking that you please give us the chance to go back, even if it's two days a week right now. Thank you for listening, eh?
Okay, thank you. Next is M. Cottingham. You can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Thank you. Um, I live on Byberry Road in Hatborough. I think the teachers are doing a great job and really engaging the kids. I think the younger kids in elementary school. Probably need to go back, third grade and under. I can't imagine teaching them. The thing is, even if they go back, school is not going to be the same. It's not going to be what they expected to be. And the teachers are going to be forced to make a choice. I'm scared that, you know, if something happens and the school has to close, what's going to happen, you know, with the teachers? And the students that are already virtual, what are going to be the changes for them? Um, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All your calls. Mr. Reichert or Dr. Taylor, do we have any emails that need to be read?
Uh, we do not, Madam President.
Okay, so then we are going to move on to the business for which the meeting was called. We are considering the return kindergarten, pre-K and before and after care fully in person on October 26, 2020. Return grades one to six and Eastern Center of Arts and Technology students to the hybrid in-person instructional model on November 5, 2020. And returning grades seven and eight to the hybrid in-person instructional model on November 9, 2020. Is there a motion?
I'm making a motion.
I second it.
Okay, any discussion?
And this is, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry, forgot that part.
Anybody have a, nothing?
I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Jim.
So the quick, I know it came up a couple of times in the public comment, but um. And, and I don't think it's true, but I was hoping maybe you can clear this up for me, Scott. When people, when the families fill out the surveys, that's not holding them to anything. That's just asking them what their feelings or their opinions are. That's not. This is what I'm doing. Is that correct?
Well, excuse me, we are asking them to basically. Commit to an instructional model of their choice. There is room for flexibility if that needs to change. So, you know, we, we certainly want to model that flexibility if there is a. You know, a purpose for a switch, but we would plan and staff based on the results of the questionnaire.
But it's not, it's nothing like a contract or anything like that, that they're being held to it. It's, it's with, you know, I wouldn't imagine that there would be a big switch either way. My understanding was is we wanted to get, for. Lack of a better word, a pulse of the community on the situation. Is that correct?
That's correct, but if, but we did expedite this timeline and, you know, the vote is moving the timeline earlier. And to do that with this, we're working under the assumption that this, this is a student's commitment of what their program would be. And so, you know, we have some, still have 21% of the students who haven't yet, we don't have a response for. So we're actively seeking a response from those families in the next, you know, immediate, it's still open today. But we'd be seeking a response to, to plan accordingly.
Okay, all right, can I just one little comment to that? With, with that being said and understanding the importance of it and staffing and the, and the timing. And would we, if we were to ask these questions to, to the teachers, and I know we have, and to the staff. It's not like we're holding them to a contract to what their response is either. Is that correct?
Uh, well, we're not asking the staff's, their preference necessarily. We're asking them, we're assessing their. Their interest, but, but more importantly, their availability to, to deliver an instructional model in return.
Okay, and we're offering like if there's extenuating circumstances, if it is a case of hybrid or going back eventually, hopefully soon to full time. That if there are extenuating circumstances, we would obviously work to accommodate and work with.
Sure.
Whether it be teachers, correct?
Sure, yes.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, so then we are going to go ahead and vote. All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 In favor of what? Just clarify for me. I'm sorry.
In the approval of the items that I read, the return to kindergarten, pre-K, before and after care fully in person, October 26, 2020. Return of grades one to six, Eastern Center of Arts and Technology students, hybrid in person on November 5. And the return of grade seven and eight to the hybrid in person on November 9.
I vote yes. And could I ask for a roll call?
Sure. Mr. Reichert, could you do a roll call, please?
Yes, I can, Madam President. Jennifer Wilson.
Aye.
Dave Brown.
Aye.
Mark Coons.
You're muted, Eric.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Aye.
Teresa Brown.
Aye.
Marion McCouch.
Aye.
Susan Hunsickerhoff.
Aye.
Tara Connor Halston.
Aye.
DJ Schultz.
Aye.
Jim Greenhall.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so that measure passes. That is the only item on our agenda for today. So we are looking now to adjourn the meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
You and have a good night.
Thank you, you as well.
Good night, everyone.